Let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, July 16, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And can we get appropriate meeting notice confirmation?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Next item is our motion to approve the agenda. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and we have an agenda. And we have a presentation of the city's 2018 audited financial statements, which you have documents in your packet for. We're skipping this. I'm sorry, I crossed the pledge off before we said it. Let's do the pledge. Presentation of the city's 2000 audited financial statements. I just get so excited about financial stuff.
2018. I know we'd all like to go back to the year 2000, but purchase Amazon stock or something.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, Dan.
I did not. And Joe's gonna go over, he's gonna reference the larger booklet you guys have.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. My name's Joe Haas. I'm an audit manager with Hawkins HCPAs. So you have some hard copy documents in front of you. The one I'm gonna go over is the thicker version. This is, it says financial statements with independent auditors report on the front of it. You do have a summary financial statement also, but I'm just gonna call out some page numbers and point out some things that I think are important and talk about the audit a little bit. So follow along if you get lost and need me to redirect you, just let me know, okay?
And we have an audit every year, correct?
Correct, yep.
And every year, we have a presentation to the public that, and to the council, that describes the audit. So this is part of our yearly audit presentation.
Correct. So that's a nice introduction to a page I wanna talk about first. If you go to pages three and four of the financial statement, these two pages are actually the most important part of the audit. This is our opinion. So the point of an audit is that you engage an independent third party, our firm, to do our audit procedures on the financial statements. This document usually comes in a more of a raw form of a trial balance and things like that. Form of procedures, no, you issue an opinion on these financial statements. Our opinion is actually on the top of page four, and it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above are fairly stated." Basically, it's a clean opinion. That's what you're looking for. The reason that is important is that there's users of these financial statements, the public, lending institutions, things like that. Get this document, and then they see that page and say, "Okay, we can rely on these numbers to issue bonds," or the public to make any sort of judgment about the city. So that's why that page is important. The next thing I wanna talk about starts on page five and goes through page, I'm not gonna go over this, but it goes through page 17. This is called a management discussion and analysis. It's actually a pretty handy section of the financial statements that breaks down this bigger document in much more understandable terms. That's really the point of it, so someone could read those 10 or so pages and get a snapshot of what was going on without having to read the full document. So there's some charts and things in there that I can, that you can look at, but just wanted to point that out. So if you would then turn to page 21. So page 21 is the balance sheet for all your governmental funds. Just a couple of things I wanna point out here. These, the funds listed here individually are called major funds. We do a calculation based on assets, revenues, things like that. Has to meet a certain percentage, then that fund gets shown individually on this page. The remainder of all your other funds get compiled into that column, second from the right, that says non-major governmental funds. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. That column is a combination of probably 10 or 15 other funds. The three here that are listed, general fund, debt service, and TIF 6, have crossed the threshold that they need to be shown individually. And that threshold is based on dollar amounts. One line item I wanna point out on here is, at the bottom of the assets section, it says advances to other funds, $268,000 in the general fund. That was money that was lent to the library fund. So it's like internal borrowing. And that amount shows up in the library funds, the liability also. So I'd just like to point out there that even though it's not classified technically as long-term debt, it still is an amount that was lent from one to the other. So I'd just like to make councils aware of that. The next thing I wanna talk about is, at the very bottom of the fund balance section, you can see that the fund balance is broken down into three different categories: non-spendable, restricted, and unassigned. So the non-spendable and restricted are set aside for specific purposes. The unassigned is really the fund balance that has not been designated for any purpose at this moment. You can see it's $1.3 million at the end of 2018. And a benchmark that we like to look at is we take that number and divide it by total expenditures for the year, and you're right at about 27%. So a lot of times we municipalities look at it between 20 and 25, and sometimes that's even in their policy, their fund balance policy, to get to that. So you guys have a strong general fund balance. The next page I would like to talk about is page 23. So these are those same funds. This is the income statement, so revenues and expenses for the 2018 calendar year. I really, only thing I wanna point out here, to keep it simple, is the third line from the bottom says net change in fund balances, basically net income or loss for the year. You can see that the general fund had a net income of $328,000. Debt service had a net loss of $296,000, which could've been by design, the debt service fund is not designed to carry a lot of fund balance or cash. And then TIF 6 also had a decrease in fund balance of $77,000, and then the total non-major funds decreased by $90,000. So general fund had an increase, the remaining funds decreased in fund balance for the year. And then the next page I wanna go to is, if you wanna shift gears and talk about your utility funds, your enterprise funds, water, sewer, and storm. Page 25 and 26 is a balance sheet for those three funds. I talked about before, major funds, these are major enterprise funds, so again, they meet a certain dollar threshold, they need to be presented individually. So I'm not gonna cover anything on the balance sheet in particular, I wanna focus on the income statement, which is on page 27. So you can see that the first line there is your charges for services, so that's what the city is collecting for water and sewer and storm fees. The second section there, the operating expenses, is operations, payroll, maintenance, things like that. And then the net, their operating income for water was $632,000, for sewer was $291,000, and for storm was $84,000. So those are pretty strong operating incomes for the utility funds, and that's kinda what we look at as an operating income line. So a lot of times when I give these presentations, we talk about rates and keeping an eye on rates, and it seems like yours are right in line with where they need to be. The next section of the financial statements is what we call the footnotes. This is a pretty long section, and can be pretty detailed. Another reason to look at that management discussion analysis in the front, it can help, but I do wanna just point out a couple of important things in the notes and kind of explain them a little bit. So one page that everyone is always usually interested in is on page 42, that's the long-term debt for the city. Actually, let's start on page 41, in the middle there. General obligation bonds, there's a 2011, 2013, 2016 issuance, and the remaining amount of those is $10,195,000 at the end of 2018. Then there's some other bank notes below that. You can see were issued in 2017 and 2018, that total is $1.5 million. For a total general obligation debt, so to be repaid with tax revenue, of $11,741,000 at the end of 2018. Then a little bit further down the page, you can see there's a lease revenue bond for the Community Development Authority of $1.5 million. And then below that is the enterprise fund debt, which is to be repaid with water and sewer revenue, so not tax money. So it's a different category of long-term debt. There's a 2002 and 2015 issuance for a total of $3.3 million. So why that general obligation versus revenue bonds is important, if you look at the middle of page 42, the city has a general obligation debt limit, they cannot issue a certain amount, over a certain dollar amount. It's based on the equalized value of the property in the city, and you can see there the debt limit for the City of Milton at the end of 2018 is $19.8 million. You currently have $11.7 million in general obligation debt outstanding, so you have about $8 million left in that cushion. So you're at about, almost 60% of your debt limit at the end of 2018. And then that schedule on the bottom of page 42 there shows the payoff schedules for the individual five years going forward, and then five-year chunks after that. So you have debt payments through 2033, as of right now. And then page 53, I just wanna kind of explain what this is. This is a breakdown of your TIF districts, and it shows the sources and uses of funds for the life of the TIF district. So you can kinda see a snapshot there at the end of the year, what has been collected and what's been spent in a fund balance of each district at the end of the year. So I'm not gonna go over those individually, but I just wanted to point out that they were there, it's kind of a handy page. And I'm not gonna go over a lot of these numbers, 'cause there's a lot of them on the page, but page 59 and 60, those funds all total the non-major fund column that we saw earlier in the financial statements. So those are much smaller special revenue and capital project funds that just don't have enough dollar amount activity during the year to be presented by themselves in the front of the financial statements. So we grouped them all together into one column, but that's the detail for them. And then another part of our audit is looking at internal controls, legal, any laws or compliance with things like that. We didn't find any issues. We test some transactions, we pull a sample, make sure things are signed off correctly and things like that, and we didn't have any findings to report, which is always a good thing. That's all I really wanted to say. I don't know if anybody has any questions, I can be happy to answer them. I know it's, sometimes can be a little thick going through those numbers, and I understand that. So if you have any general questions or questions about the audit, I can try to answer them for you.
I have a question, I guess. The debts, the debt service and the debt in general that we have as a community, when you do your audits, do you do any kind of comparison across similar entities on debt limits and where people are at, where cities are at, if you will?
Our audit procedures don't include something like that of comparing them to, we would just look at the debt limit, and that's really the piece that we look at. That's not a procedure we do, but I think would be information you could find out pretty easily if you needed to, or someone could. But it's not something that we look at as a typical audit procedure.
Would you look at it to see if we're progressing?
We look at it to make sure debt is issued in an appropriate way, and that the payments are being made and recorded appropriately, is how we do it, yep.
You guys all read it, right?
Hey, I understand, it's thick, I get it.
No, but actually, Larry, that was my one and only question, because we often did that as part of the school districts question. And knowing whether or not you are within a certain level of long-term obligation, and that you are moving at a, you know, an appropriate level over time, if you are comparable to communities of the same size, and, you know, and are you moving along in comparison to the same, similar-sized districts? And not only size, but in terms of property value and all of those things. How do you know that you are, I guess, making same when you compare TIF districts and so forth? But...
What is our bond rating? It's not...
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know. Dan, do you know what that is? You may be...
I believe it's AA1. The last time we had anything was 2016, 'cause as you know, I try to avoid doing those rating calls, because they, those rating calls cost us about $12,000 bucks.
Could you maybe talk a little bit about AA1, Dan, or you could, or...
Dan, feel free, if you...
Yeah, I'm just gonna pull it up to make sure I quoted it.
That would be an area that maybe could help people understand our financial soundness, maybe.
I will say that those bond issuance documents do a pretty good job of narratively discussing how they came to that conclusion, major employers, tax base, things like that. If the last one was 2016, I haven't read that in a while, so I couldn't recount it off the top of my head, but I'm sure Dan has access to those documents, and actually, it's pretty detailed in what they analyze and come up with, and why they decided on that rating.
We're A1, which is the fifth from the highest, with AAA being the highest. So we're four below AAA, five below AAA, but it's a very good rating. It's very common for municipality of our size to be in that range, from what I have gathered, that hasn't moved in a very, very long time.
I think that would be an important factor, too, is if it's going up or down as you issue debt year after year.
Even when we were issuing debt, when we were in the 70% range, they kept us at A1. We were teetering, but they kept us at A1, because they saw that we were aggressively paying this down.
In fairness to the auditor, it's not their job to tell us how much debt we should have.
Right, right, yes.
No, I, I know, but from the auditor's standpoint, you know, they're looking at whether the debt was authorized, whether the debt is being paid, whether the transactions are, you know, according to HOIL and so on. It sounds as if they are.
Yes, yes.
Anything else for anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, public comment. If you want to speak in front of the common council, at the beginning of the meeting, we have a sign-up sheet, and we have two people signed up for public comment, and that's Dave and Aaron Samuelson. So if you'd like to, if you have no public comment, that's okay, too.
We're just here for 10 to 11.
Oh, okay, all right. Is there anybody else that has any public comments that is related to an item on the Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to item number six, which is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say it.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding a transfer of land to the Milton School District.
So this is an item that has come forth as part of the referendum approval through discussions with the School District of Milton, and specifically to their Milton East Elementary School expansions. Their expansion would require an additional, about 1.4 acres of land in South Goodrich Park from the city. In conversations with the school district, we've put together kind of an approach in which we would, what we've called a land swap, which would serve as consideration for the city granting that land over to the school district. The city would receive other pieces of land as outlined in the letter of intent as exhibits A, B, and C, as consideration for that land being transferred over to the school district of Milton. This land, specifically on Municipal Drive, there are two chunks of land, one that would bring a piece of land that currently is used as a stormwater facility that is kind of operated and maintained and constructed by the city, would bring it into the city's ownership, as well as a small piece of land that currently has Municipal Drive on it that's in the, in the school district's ownership. And then there is a small transfer, residual transfer in there as well, that would put all of the school district's driveway on their property. And then in exhibit C, over at the library, there is a rectangular-shaped piece of land that has part of the library's parking lot on it, that's currently owned by the school district, would be transferred over to the school, to the city, as well as some green space that hopefully will be future, future utilized in the Storybook Gardens project when that project moves forward. So it really is just a swap, as it says, kind of on the face, a transfer of land that allows the school district to move forward with their Milton East improvements, but also just kinda cleans up some other areas that have been longstanding in the community. The land specifically at Milton East is, again, it's about 1.4 acres of land, but it actually really only shifts the property line about 40 feet from the current edge of pavement that exists out there in their playground right now. So 1.4 acres of land probably sounds like a lot, but it really is kind of actually a smaller piece of land when you're out there in person. And the activities at this park will not be disrupted by it, we won't need to change any of the ball diamonds or reconfigure anything out there. For all intents and purposes, I think, fast forward a year or two from now when the improvements are done, folks probably wouldn't even necessarily notice it. But it is important that we have this discussion here in terms of the land swap. The letter of intent that is included in the packet is simply that, it's a letter of intent. It really just kind of puts down in words the conversations that the school district administration has had and the city administration has had. And really, all we're looking for tonight is any comments, questions, concerns, feedback, or direction you may have on that letter of intent. And if everybody is kind of on the same page and is in agreement with the narrative that's in the letter of intent, we would bring back a more formal operative purchase for our August 6th meeting. This went before the school board last evening, and it passed unanimously, and also went before the Parks and Recreation Committee last night, and passed unanimously there as well, with positive reclamation from both entities. But again, we really just kinda wanted to get any feedback that the council may have, so we don't pursue, proceed down a path that not everybody's in agreement with, so...
Devil's advocate for a moment. Guess that's always my nature, but I realize we can't predict the future, but I have a question about future, potential future expansion of East. I mean, we don't know what the future holds, but with our region growing the way it is, and especially Milton, the city proper, and the townships, there could be a time when the school district might have to have more land again. And I have a concern about that. I'm not saying I'm opposed to the land swap as it is, I'm just wondering if there's some foresight or thought about that, 'cause the only way they could expand, obviously, would be into city property again, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that that's an interesting hypothetical situation that could occur. You know, if, if growth continues in the way that it has, I think, you know, obviously, the school district certainly doesn't wanna go to referendum again anytime soon. But, you know, you look at a community like Sun Prairie, and they are growing at a rate that, that is almost impossible for them to keep up with. So those situations do exist. I think it's unlikely that something like that would occur. When's the last expansion occurred at East before this most recent one?
I don't...
Mrs. Roche?
Yes. I believe around, in the 1960s.
Okay.
And I would say grow up instead of out.
With all due respect.
Second floor.
I think, to, I'm not saying this would happen, but part of the discussion during this whole process was harmony, there's an expansion out there, but then part of the discussion when we were planning that is to plan for future there. We also talked about west and east, and how we are pretty much, laylocked, and we are as big as we can be. So if Milton does continue to grow, I think the next conversation, and as you're right, we don't wanna talk referendum, would be another school of some sort.
Yeah. Yeah, it's certainly hard to predict the future in that, in that world. I know back in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, when the Metcalf Farm was being projected to be developed in the city of Janesville, they had allocated within their kind of preliminary subdivision concept plan, you know, a 30-acre school site. I think at the time, that was still open for debate, whether that would be in the city of Janesville or Milton School District, I don't even know. If that determination was made, it ended up being a moot point, because that, that development never came forward. But I mean, I think Janesville's at capacity with Kennedy Elementary School, the boundaries are pretty set, so it's, I would, if the last expansion occurred in 1965, that means we've got another 70 years before the next one. But, but yeah, I think, I, it's so hard to predict the future in anything that we would say would be completely hypothetical, but yeah, I think if we grew at the, at that kind of rate, continued to grow at that kind of rate, it's likely that a new site would be, would be part, equally a part of the equation as opposed to an additional expansion.
And maybe I can go second on my, second point is, if there is thought of doing that, then it might be, behoove us to look at that now. Do you follow what I'm saying? I mean, if we're, rather than be, I mean, if there's, if there's a potential for expansion, is that 1.4 acres adequate to meet that potential need? My point being, easier to discuss it now than to discuss it later when another council might be sitting here, other people might have different views about, well, I'm not sure we should give another acre or two to the school district.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question. I'm not trying to hold things up or... I think it's too much of a, of a cloudy crystal ball to have that conversation, at least in my opinion, maybe the school district feels differently, but, you know, what would that expansion look like? My thought is, is even with this 1.4 acres, that taps them out at this site. So in the event that another expansion would occur, yes, it would likely mean that more land would likely need to be transferred, or they would look at a different location. But that, it's, I think it's, would be way too difficult to make that speculation at this point. And I, yeah, I don't...
That's why, I just raised it because...
Yeah. No, it's, I think they, I think it's a good question to have that conversation, you know, with, with proactive thoughts in mind, as the community continues to grow, is there another location, or where would that location be? Probably not anything within the city right now, but, you know, let's, let's look out 50 years from now, where would that next school site be? And, and what would be an appropriate size for that? And, you know, in an ideal world, and we, if we could have the dollars to do community planning, neighborhood planning for areas that are undeveloped, that, that would be the appropriate mechanism to establish that. But, you know, those are, those are, those things that used to occur in the 60s, 70s, and 80s are now considered luxuries today, you know? And that's, that's the difficulty, is it with levy limits and tax rates, if we were to go out and spend, you know, $100,000 on neighborhood planning, planning for the next 50 years, people would be furious with that kind of expenditure in a speculative way. Again, if we were Sun Prairie, yeah, you, you have to do it, you have to do it every day, it's a necessity, but as much as we're growing, I don't think we're there yet. That's my thought. I'm not an expert, though.
Well, and this is really, yeah, it's, and it is a good question, but it's really a school district thing that we aren't experts in, but we are happy that two experts are here. Yeah. So, any other questions regarding this?
It looks like the 1.4 acres, basically, the school's already using that for the playground and stuff, as it is?
Yeah, it's one of those kind of things in Milton that most folks don't even probably know, that the majority of the playground at Milton East is already on school property. I mean, the school district, I'm sorry, the city property, school district's been aware of that, city's been aware of that, but it's worked out now to, you know, no big deal. But when they, when the plans came to build a building, then, then we had to rectify it at this time, yeah. This was actually, we discussed it back in 2016 when we did the northern parking lot, too, so...
Does the playground stuff move to the south? Is that what happens?
Someone's gonna move to the west, so we're gonna fill in...
Can you come up to the, to the podium, because we can't hear you on the, on our very famous YouTube recordings that have a wide viewer attraction?
While we don't have a playground development quite set, the whole goal is to kinda keep everything in a straight line to the west. When you look at the site plan right now, it looks like you can take those swings and shift them to the west. And then there's more playground equipment that's currently... And then there's more playground equipment that's currently on the east side of the building, and that's going to swing around to just kind of square off the playground area and still not encroach on the softball diamond or any city part of the park.
So it's not like, it's not like the playground then continues to head south?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. Well, we won't cross the boundary like we already did.
It happens everywhere in the city we found. I mean, the city does it to the school district.
Clearly. Clearly. They have four designated stalls at the library. They didn't even know.
Could have been leasing them up for years.
Exactly. I, I will say that Stephen has been unbelievably amicable in this conversation, these conversations. He's been, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation right now. We'd be struggling to have this conversation had Stephen not kind of taken the ball and run with it. And, you know, in understanding the, you know, the city's sensitivity to the park and not disturbing the park while still maintaining the appropriate amount of outdoor activity area for the school district, I'm sure Principal Kramer's been involved in those conversations as well. But yeah, they, the initial plan showed it encroaching even further into the park. Stephen immediately recognized the fact that that, you know, wasn't ideal, so worked with the architect to kind of shift the playground around, try to maximize the green space while still preserving the amount of appropriate outdoor activity space for the school district. So I, I just, I think it's been a good conversation, ongoing conversation for the last couple of weeks.
For sure. For sure.
I have a question. Are you, for the area that is directly around Milton East, are, with this expansion and all of the movement that you're doing here, are you going to finish that sidewalk?
Are you talking on the Parkview side or on the...
On the Parkview side.
The Parkview side is done, I believe, correct? Howie, it's the 26th side that doesn't have a connection?
This here, yeah.
It's, it's just old area.
Yeah.
Oh, is this just old? Okay.
Parkview's done.
So, so what sidewalk are you asking about?
The side, well, it's, yeah, no, actually, I'm talking about the one that's right here.
That one's already done.
That one's done.
Okay. So that was the Parkview sidewalk that's already done?
Yeah. Yeah, that, this photo is old, just to kind of...
So there is not a sidewalk issue then?
No.
Okay. How would you like to address this? Do you, just one motion, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the council. You know, I think ideally you would make a motion to instruct staff to prepare the appropriate transfer documentation and bring that forth at the next council meeting.
I'll make that motion, thank you.
Offer to purchase.
Offer to purchase.
Okay. Lee, Inga, what do you have for a motion?
So, direct staff to formalize the letter of intent with the school district of Milton into a formal offer to purchase and requisite property transfer documentation? Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
The first and second are all good. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
I don't.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we're moving along in the process.
I think this is a great way to straighten out the lines of all of these different areas. Just clean it up.
So this will not be the last time we see our friends at the school district. They're going to be renting out a room in the back of this building over the next couple of weeks because they have several items on the August 6th Plan Commission Agenda, several items on the August 6th City Council Agenda, and then they'll be back again for some of the final pieces on August 20th for the comprehensive plan update. And that, that addresses just the elementary schools. They'll be back again later for the middle school and the high school, and then for the, the Dome Stadium next spring, so.
Just kicking up controversy.
Yeah.
And is there a comment?
I was just going to say, I could share with you guys what the preliminary schedule is for coming back, you know, and they outlined for what the elementary schools are going to be in the month of August, but shortly thereafter, we'll have the middle school followed by the high school, so we'll be familiar faces with you guys over the next few months, so.
And this is the only project that requires any additional land, so all the other ones will be just kind of similar procedural site plan, conditional use permit, things of that nature, so those will be much more routine. Milton East is always an issue.
That's because of the principle.
Yeah. The current or the former?
It's those radical women. What are we going to do about this? Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming. All right, so we're good to move to item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant request for the scoreboard and grill located at 100 Merchant Row.
Scoreboard Bar and Grill has submitted a commercial facade grant application request to rehab the front of their location at 100 Merchant Row. They previously brought forth a site plan to the Plan Commission that was approved back in June and now have submitted a facade grant as, as shown and attached to help assist with the completion of those, those proposed improvements. Pat is here on behalf of the Scoreboard Bar and Grill. If you have any questions regarding his site plan or his approval, but from the application perspective, this meets all necessary criteria. It's, it's pretty much exactly what the program was designed for, and we're, you know, happy that he's able to, to be here to answer questions.
I'll recommend approval of the facade grant for scoreboard, bar, and grill in the amount of $4,777.50.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comments?
I have, go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
Well, I have one. I want to thank you for taking advantage of the facade grant, and it's really exciting to see what's going on down along there and you being part of it. And so on behalf of me as a community representative, I think it's great, so thank you.
The only regret I have is I didn't do over our budget.
We can always put it on an agenda.
Thank you very much. We're just happy to have the opportunity. That's awesome that you're doing that for the downtown. You look great.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck with your improvements. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a claim from American Family Insurance.
Back on June 29th of this year, the city of Milton received a claim from American Family Insurance in the amount of $10,065 in, and items outlined with the claim indicating that there was damages that occurred on May 16th. The city had forwarded that claim to its insurance company, which recommended denying the claim. In order to deny the claim, the city council must take effective action to deny that claim related to the damages indicated at 311 East Sunset Drive.
I'll make a motion to deny the claim.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and direction regarding Windsor Court stormwater request.
So this was an item that was on the agenda last month. It was requested by the council. Well, this item wasn't on the agenda, but there was a discussion at the last month's council meeting, and the council requested that this item be placed on the agenda for a more formal conversation to happen. Mr. Samuelson, obviously, is in the audience and has requested the city investigate the possibility of constructing some additional stormwater improvements on his property. And so we placed this item on the agenda for additional discussion from the council. City engineer Mark Langer is here as well, who may be able to answer any questions or if the council wants to have kind of a general discussion, or if it requires any background or if Mr. Samuelson wants to provide any input as well. But this is really just a, a general discussion and direction as requested by the council. We did include a map this time. Makes it a little bit easier to see. So Windsor Court, as you can tell on the map, terminates into the private driveway that starts at Mr. Samuelson's property. Mr. Samuelson owns two lots, actually, as shown on the map, so we've talked in great length about four property owners, and there is four property owners, but there's actually five properties. And then as Windsor Court terminates into a private drive, the other four, I'm sorry, other three homes, including Mr. Samuelson's, in addition to Mr. Samuelson's, receives their ingress and egress from that private drive. This is a unique situation. It is, it is an odd, unique situation.
Were you expecting to speak?
No, well, you, you can, but additionally, they said no, but if you wish.
Yes, so I'm Dave Samuelson, 52 Windsor Court, and you know, I think I brought my points up the last time. The concern is, as you go down Windsor Court, there's no storm sewers whatsoever there, so the water literally comes down the road and then curves off to the right on that private easement road that I own, my wife and I own, that my neighbors use as well. And that easement road is literally being destroyed because the water has no designated direction to go. And then if you look to, you'll see on my second lot, you'll see the pole barn there. That's the building that gets flooded when the water comes down. It just literally flows right through that pole barn and floods that out. So really trying to work with Mark and Howie to come up with a way to channel that water so it goes really where it should be, which is kind of in that triangular area on my first lot. So it comes down that road, flows through and past the pole barn, then back to the, that would be towards the west into that triangular area, which is the zoned area for the, the water, and that becomes a pretty large pond that fills up almost that entire area.
So my understanding is you're still having discussions with the city and...
Yes, yeah, Howie and Mark were down just the other day, and that was, that was more for the easement part of it, which is somewhat different, but we talked about some potential strategies to mitigate the water issue as well.
Okay, so if I understand it correctly, right now, you're just kind of in problem-solving mode for the water issue?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think what would be helpful from staff's perspective is, does the council have a desire for us to continue to work with Mr. Samuelson to either develop a, a potential solution and bring that back to the council? Or, or do we, or do we, I guess, would you authorize us to continue to have those conversations? Because every time Mark goes out there, it costs the city money. At money that we're not recovering from the Windsor Court project or from, that we're not billing to Mr. Samuelson. So if we're, if we're going to continue to have those types of conversations, I think it's important that the council knows that there's a cost associated with that. It would be no different than any other kind of developers' agreement that we would have with a developer where, where costs would be incurred. But if, if it's the council's wishes, again, just outline the options, if it's the council's wishes to say, hey, you know what, I, this is what it is, we don't authorize any more expenditures, then at least we have that direction.
Is the building of the temporary easement an appropriate or an expected part of this project? And if not, what are the expenses that will be incurred by the city to do this?
Except for, are we on the easement?
Yeah, so the next, just, yeah, the next item on the agenda is a temporary construction easement that's associated with the re-surfacing of Windsor Court, and it actually has no bearing one way or another on the stormwater issue that Mr. Samuelson has discussed. If the stormwater situation didn't exist at all, we'd still be requesting the temporary construction.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, yep.
Is it part of it or not?
No, it's not.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
I know it is confusing, yeah, yeah.
The Plan Commission had that question, too.
Yes, they did.
Do we, do we know whether the Windsor Court project is going to have any impact on the situation?
It should have, it should have no impact. It shouldn't worsen it or make it better.
Okay.
Because it's really just a replacement of existing facilities, above-ground facilities, that is.
Yeah, as Al said, it's basically taking out what's there and putting it back in the same location.
Okay.
The easement allows us to pave, similar to what we would do on other driveways on Windsor Court, we'd make repairs adjacent to our street construction. But again, because this is a unique situation where the private property terminates at the end of the roadway section, in order to try to make that transition work similar to other private drives that would fall within a right-of-way, we need an easement to do that.
Mark, can I, I have a brother-in-law that grew up in, or lived in Texas, and when I went to visit him, he lived in a suburb of Dallas, and the streets were the actual stormwater system. You know what I mean? The streets carried the stormwater out away from the city. They didn't have stormwater. Is that the case with the, I, I hear what Mr. Samuelson says, I just want to make sure I understand. So does the water, in fact, travel down that, down that existing street now and then empty out into the, those properties?
Yes, there's a catch basin in the, let's see, be the northeast corner of Madison Avenue and Windsor Court.
I noticed that basin, okay.
Catches a lot of the water off of Madison Avenue, but then anything that gets onto Windsor Court travels north to the end of Windsor Court, follows the natural or man-made drainage ways that have been made.
Sure.
To that conservancy that Mr. Samuelson talked about where it has gone.
Is that, is that, I'm putting you on the spot. Maybe I shouldn't ask this question. Is that what, is that good engineering? I guess is the question I'm asking you, based with today's standards. Maybe I'm putting you on the spot with that question.
Stormwater can be handled in several, in several ways. I mean, there's, there's existing areas that drain overland because of topography. You can't install storm sewer without maybe extending a long, a long distance to, to get the pipe deep enough in the ground to convey the stormwater, so overland flow would be the only route. In Texas, I think maybe there's some bedrock concerns, or they avoid piping, maybe? I'm not sure, I'm not from Texas.
I'm not either. I'm just saying they were doing it, and it made...
There are areas in the city that have stormwater that travel over, overland along the roadway for long stretches before it catches, or goes into a storm sewer.
Sure.
Well, I guess my question about the easement was, just to clarify where it belonged in this decision-making, and answered my question, and that really was all I needed to know. So as part of the discussion, I am done.
So I think the, the council would have an option to direct staff to continue to work out a solution. But if, if you were to, to continue with having the staff work for a solution, that there would be some sort of developers' agreement that it wouldn't be at a cost to the city going further. So it would be in some sort of developers' agreement. Does that make sense, Mark? Are you listening?
I was listening, yes. That's an option.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, because I, it's up to you whether you, did you understand what I said?
No.
I didn't.
Okay, so...
Who's paying for this?
So, so up to this point, the city has paid for everything, including Mark going out and looking at the, at the site. But it seems to me that if there was, if you wanted the staff to continue to look for a solution, you could have it be part of an agreement that the city has with Mr. Samuelson that he would pay for, I guess I'm saying essentially the city staff's time or Mark's time or how...
Yeah, that approach is, is basically what we do with every other development. In the event that somebody wanted to subdivide property or somebody wanted to construct a facility... or somebody wanted to construct a facility, we would enter into a developers agreement to make sure that the city's time and costs were accounted for and recuperated so, so the general taxpayers wouldn't have to, to share in that cost of that, of that private improvement.
If I could just make a comment on that, just to be clear, we're not developing any property. This is literally a community water problem that's destroying an easement road that Conkles, Kenyans, Axelson and Samuelson use, as well as Baker, okay? So we're talking about, city water has nowhere to go. It literally comes onto my property, which destroys my property and makes it hazardous for one, two, three, you know, five people to use. So it is, I can tell you right now, if there's any developer cost or any, anything on us, there's no need to vote on that because we're not going to pay it. That's, that's, it's really that simple. Because this road is, eventually is going to be gone. And then Conkles, Kenyon, Axelson and Baker, they're going to have to deal with this on their own because we're not going to replace it. So I, I hope that kind of makes sense, that, that we're not willing to share in costs that we don't believe it's a problem that we created. We believe it's a community problem that the community is collecting money for and paying to the city to deal with stormwater issues. It's not a Samuelson-only issue. They were not a developer.
I was just kind of wondering, you, you've named all of the, all of your neighbors here. But yet, I don't recall hearing from Conkles and Kenyans. So I'm wondering, were they there when you moved in? Or were, did, did they build after your house was built? Because my concern is that if you're looking at a permanent solution for water and sewer, that's going to probably mean a total road replacement. And that would mean that all of your neighbors are going to be part of that. It wouldn't just be you, it would be the whole neighborhood. And I was also wondering, I know, how many years have you lived there?
So it's been in our family since 81. And all the other houses were there except for Axelson's house was not there in 81.
And all the other houses were?
They were.
And this is the first year that you've had the flood over the road?
No, no, we've had that many years. It seems to be getting worse, for some reason, in the last few years. It could be because the silt that's coming off the, the city literally plugs the culverts that we have already there.
Right, right. But then you're also in a bowl. I mean, you're, the topography of that area, as it is, is, everything is going downhill.
Yep, to the northern part of the triangular shape of the property, that's where the bowl is.
Well, actually, I believe that most of the properties, even on Madison Avenue, are in an uphill. And then they go down.
That is true, yes.
So, so really, it's, it's a pretty common problem for anybody in this area. So I guess my question for the council is, is this something that the city is willing to repair and replace?
Well, does the city own that, that road?
No, we do.
Okay, so that road is not a city road?
It's not.
Okay, all right.
Do you have an agreement with your neighbors to use this road?
There's an easement.
Okay.
There's a recorded easement for them, yes.
Okay. So everything, just so I'm clear and the audience is clear, this is all taking place on private property, it's not city-owned property?
Correct.
Okay.
May I ask another question, Mr. Samuelson?
Yes.
In those easements, is there, is there paragraph or documentation to the effect that you're, they're helping you maintain that roadway?
No, there's, there's none that I, I have seen of that. Those easements goes back to, I mean, probably early 1900s. They're very, very old. Sorry?
Because it was Milton Junction?
Yes.
At the time, right. Howie, where do we have, or do we have this area for a street? Full street at any time on our capital schedule that you can recall?
You mean for where the driveways are?
Yeah.
I don't think there was ever where the driveways are to these houses. I mean, a long time ago, in a different comprehensive plan, there was a, where Windsor Court would go to the west. But I don't ever remember seeing anything where it went to the east.
Yeah, it's, it's not a street.
Yeah, it's not a street, I mean...
So in order, and I, I think if I understand your question correctly, your question is, is there any plans for the city to develop the private driveway into a street? And the answer to that is no. I mean, that would require them to be dedicated as right-of-way. And I mean, there would be a, a process that would, would, would have to undertake. And no, that's not any plans to do that, that's never even been requested.
How many times has the city been there looking at this issue?
Well, we did, well, Mark did a initial, like, cost estimate, you know, just to see how much if, if it all went underground pipe from there. And we had a cost estimate for that, so that was probably four or five hours, would you say, Mark? And then probably just this last time, we were down there on Windsor Court for the, you know, for the easement. And so just when we were there, we just talked about it. And then I think Mark took like another hour to take a couple of elevations to see if a different ditch situation that was a lot less money would work. So there hasn't been, there's been no material cost, just some time cost that's probably been less than, see, like, I don't charge and Al doesn't charge, but it's probably been less than 10 hours, would you say, Mark? For the whole, for trying to find a solution, so...
So would the ditch option work in the end, do you think? Or is it going to be pipes if, if this were to go, if we were trying to find a solution for this?
We have a very detailed survey, but as Howard said, I did take some basic shots here recently. Any option with pipe would have to be extended quite a distance or the pipe would be very shallow, adjacent to Windsor Court, possibly even coming up out of the ground. A ditch option could work, it would probably still have to run, I mean, depending on the boulders, which are yours, how, how it would be laid out through there. But it's an option that could work. It would probably be the best option, again, given the existing grades, unless, again, pipe was extended a lot farther distance than just to try to get it out of the road right of way.
Do you have a rough idea how much something like that would cost?
It would be substantially less. I mean, just the grading and repairing the asphalt pavement, it might be, you know, a quarter, a fifth of total cost.
What was the total, what was the...
It was like $70,000, I think. So I mean, it might be 10, 15, depending, again, on what the limits would be for the ditch, how far we'd try to go and how much asphalt pavement we would replace on the private road to make the ditch work.
And what do you mean, that's to Samuelson's? Okay.
And initially, the storm sewer alternative was looked at as a request of Mr. Samuelson. And that's not something that, I mean, we have other situations where a homeowner has called or a business and, hey, can you look at our stormwater? So it's not a totally unique to this point. But again, as Al said, to go forward, it's going to involve more effort and possibly construction costs. And that's where the discussion is needed.
So, and if I understand you correctly, you're not willing to pay for any, anything going forward?
No, we're not.
Okay, so, so the question is, does the, the council want to pay for more, more time? And, or just...
I personally feel like we've gotten a lot of information for you just because of the situation that we're going to be doing on Windsor Court. But it is private property. And when your family purchased this property, they knew what they were going into. We have had a lot of rain this year, as everybody knows. And everybody all over is feeling the effects of it. I personally do not, I, I'm going to make a motion that we allow the Samuelsons to take this information and do whatever they choose to with it. I believe that the city staff has put in quite a lot of time. And I can't, I can't explain to my neighbors why we would be doing anything major in one personal property without opening up that can of worms to the whole city. And because of the topography that we have in this city, this is not going to be the only one. There would be more. And so I would make the, the motion that we have staff not go forward with any more work.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the easement.
So we kind of already discussed this. This is an easement that's being requested in order to kind of feather in or blend in improvements at the end of Windsor Court, the public portion of Windsor Court, as it enters into the private driveway for Mr. Samuelson and the other neighbors, as well as the Bakers. This temporary construction easement would only exist or the, our rights would only exist until the cessation of the construction activities. But it would allow us to access to that private property in order to kind of blend in those improvements. So there's not just an abrupt stop at the property line.
I'll move to authorize staff to secure the temporary construction of an easement located at the end of Windsor Court.
There's a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, moving on. Discussion and action to approve new and remaining renewal operator licenses.
This is a continuation kind of of the conversation that we had back in June. These are some additional operator licenses, new and renewal, as indicated. All these individuals listed on the agenda item have gone through the requisite background checks and are recommended for approval by the common council.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, our June financial statements.
This is the, we're at the halfway point. And there's no concerns, as you kind of heard from Joe earlier on 2018. We finished a good year. There's a, I guess if there's any specific questions people have about anything on the check register or anything like that.
This doesn't require a motion, but...
It doesn't, I'm just giving you a chance to read it and come up with questions. No questions.
Good job, Dan. Nice job.
Okay, general items, committee reports. I know Parks and Rec met.
Yeah, we, we met last night. We, I mean, we saw a couple of items here today. Right, the school district, land, whatever swap. What else can we talk about?
The groundbreaking ceremony for the Veterans Park Pavilion is going to be on July 24th at 5:00 PM at the site, which is in the northwest corner of Veterans Park, near the memorial. Parks and Recreation Commission is also looking into pricing for permanent picnic tables at the splash pad. And I think those were the main things at this point. Howie, did you have anything else from Parks and Rec last night? Okay.
Larry?
May I suggest maybe have one of those tables?
May I suggest that maybe one of those tables would have the, for a wheelchair?
Yep, they're, they're looking at purchasing more than likely six tables and two of those would have the accessibility there.
They're nice for ladies with children and strollers.
Yeah, strollers and, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't have a committee report, but I do have a very special announcement from the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. There's a community expo on August 8th from 5:00 to 7:00. And the chamber will be raising money for their Shining Star program. And then, of course, the fire department will also have their fundraiser going on. They're selling hot dogs and hamburgers. It's a full house, there's going to be a lot of businesses there, a lot of things for kids, and of course, good food and all of our fire and EMS and paramedics and all of those great people and the things that they do. So I just want to encourage everyone to come.
And just to add on to that too, the city and the library will be sharing a table at the event.
Oh, yay. So I take it you guys did not sign up for a shift to work that table? Is there, is there a cost to go?
No, it is free. Children are, it's free and children are welcome.
Well, I can cover that.
Any other committee announcements?
I have two other ones. Historic Preservation Commission hasn't met for a little while, but the Milton House is celebrating the 175th anniversary of the Milton House and the blacksmith shop at a picnic that's taking place tomorrow evening at 5:00 in North Gritterich Park and likely in the community house, since it's going to be very warm. So that'll be a nice event just to celebrate 175 years of having the Milton House and the blacksmith shop in town. And, what was that? There, I believe there's no cost to attend. So, the other thing is that Rock County, they're looking for additional volunteers to work at the Rock County Tourism Booth. The Milton Day is July 25th. So if anyone's interested in taking a couple hours, let me know.
And is that at the 4H Fair? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, and I will give you a pass to get in. So you won't have to do that.
Will you send out an email reminder?
Yeah.
Thanks. Teresa, did you want to talk about the fire commission?
Our meeting tomorrow night is canceled. And we will meet again in August. In his place, the fire subcommittee will be meeting to discuss some of the items on the agenda. And then the other issue was, they get the issue on, in August, but Linda talked about that, so we're all ready for that event. That was it.
Any other committee reports? Staff reports, Howie?
They are hoping to start the Front Street project the last week of July, front on Windsor Court. And the lift station project, there'll be a detour Monday on Highway 59 when they cross the road.
This, this 59?
This 59 out here.
Not that 59.
59 and 26 intersection.
Which intersection? Is it a stoplight intersection?
A stoplight intersection is where the detour will be.
Oh, you can't resist. I assume they're doing that to get to the other side of the road.
Right.
Okay, so I just want to understand. You can't go, like, that's my, that's my bike riding. So if I want to get to my house, to the bike trail?
Go High Street.
Go...
High Street, High Street.
On the bike trail? You, you, from...
Like, I don't live where you think I live, I don't think. I live over there.
From your house, you could go, you could go to St. Mary's.
Oh, so Janesville to High?
Janesville Street to Stores Lake.
Or Parkview to High, or what?
Yeah, the detour route is Janesville to High Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so I'm turning right here to go out of town for a trip. You will go up to the old stoplights and take a right.
The old stoplights.
You go to, go to, go to the stoplights that aren't there anymore, so...
Okay, all right. I just don't want to, you know, when I get on my bike at 5:30 in the morning, I don't need any surprises. Anything else, Howie? Dan, you're good?
Yep.
Ashley?
No, just very busy.
No, just very busy.
Al?
I had an excellent opportunity to meet with the new school district superintendent. He had a... We met with him last week, but then...
I was there.
Had a little meet and greet last night up at the school district administration offices, and it was well-attended and very excited to work with Mr. Dom.
And he also attended the YWCA fundraiser that Linda and I attended, so he's out there meeting a lot of people, so that's exciting for us. And as you all can see, I am wearing a UW organ donation tee-shirt, which I promised I would wear one day, a day that I had a lot of meetings, to promote organ donation. So, as you all know, that was part of the parade, too. So, two things to do. Complete the survey, donate your organs. That's all I got for tonight.
Those two things are not related.
They are not related.
Is there a deadline for either one?
All right, so I don't know who signed up for team building.
We didn't name one?
Who was it?
Good Creek.
What's your favorite organ? Just kidding.
Hammond. Larry's got the answer. He said Hammond.
Very good, very... Oh, okay, all right. So, do you play an instrument? And if you don't, what instrument would you like to learn how to play? Did we already go through this? Did we do this before?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I used to play the electric guitar back in the day when my fingers worked well. What I'd like to learn to play is the hammered dulcimer.
Do a little drinking.
Yeah.
Well, not that kind of, no.
I'll take you guys anywhere anymore.
I have been taking up the harmonica.
Oh, really?
It's something I wanted, wanted to do, and I've been doing, you know, internet kind of stuff to blow some blues harp.
We're looking to start a band here.
I know how to play the guitar, and I'd like to learn how to play the guitar.
Right, I, same. I used to play the guitar professionally, and I wish I knew how to play it.
I used to play the piano, and I would like to learn how to play the piano and the guitar.
I played cello, and I'd like to try and remember how to play it again.
Owen's played trombone back a long time ago, but I'd like to learn to play a fife.
Yeah, I actually played the trombone, too, in like sixth grade for a year.
I didn't have a choice.
I actually learned how to play the organ, but I would like to play the guitar. And I do have one, have had it for a long time.
Hey, Ashley?
The only thing I ever played was the recorder in grade school in music class, because we had to. I will...
So it sounds like we need someone to give the council guitar lessons minimally for a few people. I know somebody that's retiring soon.
The chief knows. Chief plays.
Yeah.
Piano.
Piano, yes.
Howie?
No musical talent. I could probably play the triangle.
Barackens?
Yeah, I could maybe handle that, you know. I don't... Let's see. Probably just about anything. I don't know, probably guitar, piano, maybe accordion.
Yeah, for sure. Costetino?
Wisconsin. Bagpipes would be okay, too.
Mark?
Well, formerly played trumpet. I would say probably, at this point, I'd be interested in concert slide whistle.
I was surprised to hear that someone else played a cello a long time ago, because I did for about four years. But I can't think of any instrument I actually have a desire to play.
It's all numbers, huh? Does the audience want to jump in?
Yeah.
Aren't you very musically talented? Welcome to team building, Stan.
I will, I will tell the story. Kim reminded me of this. I was in a band for years and years and years, and whenever we would learn a new song periodically, I would have to play some part of that song on the guitar, not ever lead, but there'd be parts where I would need to kind of pick up while the lead took over. And there was many times where I just didn't know how to do it. So I would turn off my guitar at the instrument controls, and the other guys in the band would know, because it was just loud. They would know, but I would know. And after I did that about seven or eight times, the sound guys in the back stopped me at a break and said, "Why do you always turn off your guitar during that song?" I said, "'Cause I have no idea how to play it."
Oh, I will meet with you after council. Thank you. Our next meeting is August 6, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.